It also built as designed, and it's not, I don't want to overly simplify it, but it's not an overly complicated system when you have this large area. It seems like that could be confirmed.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, if I have one question. So if we could get the inspection reports just as a review, is that what we're, for that latest O&M, is that what we're going to try to get to?
I'll get it to Richard just to look at it.
That way we can supply that to the...
See how that plays into it. I didn't realize that.
Okay, because there may be some analysis that the engineer can do based on the inspection reports and just make a recommendation or determination off of that, if that's what...
But the point was whoever signs the O&M plan can evaluate this issue we're talking about.
Right. They should be able to handle all of that to be honest. But if we can get the inspection reports just as, as some type of a backup for us, that would be...
I'll tell you what I would do if I were you. I would think about, you've got 25 trees sitting out there in front of this lot. I'd run some of the water from my lot down there into some sort of an underground sluicing device to keep those trees enough watered to live, because they're going to be pounded by the sun, and I don't know how much water you're going to be able to get in that area. That's just a suggestion.
Oh, yeah, sure. The developer's here, and I'm sure she's taken note of that recommendation or analysis of...
Before you leave, one more time, what was it you were asking in terms of the waterline? That you wanted something included on the platte? Stipulating that the lot, the other lot, not the Autozone, but the other lot would not be developed?
Right. If we could get an approval for the split, the resub of Lot 4, we would add a note to the, to the drawing that the developer would sign off on, stating that, that before any kind of develop, any kind of building permit, any kind of design, anything's done, that that waterline and fire hydrant would be installed prior to and approved by everybody, obviously. You know, it's just us trying to get the split approved faster.
What are you talking about, Richard?
I'm filing it, man.
For motion and for the questions.
And Mr. Chairman, I could add that if that is a desire of the planning commission, we can, through the building department's MUNIS system, flag that, and that can be a flag in the system before a permit's issued. So that can be done, and we can ensure that will be called.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Can we have one more question to the planning department, or to Wayne? Is there anything? I understand it, it's a two lot, so it's really, I mean, I get that it's, in a lot of ways, not a major subdivision, but it's been bumped into that category. But since it has been bumped into that category, is there any other criteria of a major subdivision that would be beneficial for this location and the particular issues facing this location that we should consider?
I don't think there is. I mean, you know, there's typically with a major subdivision, you have multiple lots, you have internal streets, you have drainage structures, those kind of things. I think this is sort of a hybrid of that, because we do have a two-lot subdivision that's entering their drainage into an existing system. So to answer your question, I don't think there's anything that we've, that we're missing that would be a detriment if we did not apply that regulation. It's a, you know, it's sort of a small phrase in our ordinance that says basically that if, if you have to install utilities or do any kind of improvements like that, it kicks it up into the major category.
And it's really meant for grain fields.
But doesn't go into detail. That's right. That's right.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Case SD 18.07, I move that we approve this, this preliminary platte, right? Preliminary platte, subject to staff recommendations. A through, through F and G will be a requirement of the platte stipulating that the undeveloped lot will not receive building permit nor any development of any kind until such time as water main is upgraded and fired.
Typically, we issue a land disturbance permit, which would need to be done prior to a building permit. So you want to make sure that before they get a land disturbance permit?
Land disturbance permit, yes. Okay, thank you. Wayne?
And that's written into the staff conditions of acceptance.
Technically, they're required to have a land disturbance permit in order to do the upgrades.
Right.
So we don't need G because it's already covered by the prior...
...about what the upgrade is, before they can do it.
What I was suggesting is that you, we allow them to do land disturbances because they have to do that to, to make the improvements. Have to get land disturbance to make the improvements. But not, but not, but still keep the building permit language in there, but allow them to go forward with the land disturbance. Because we say no development, the land disturbance is considered development.
Gotcha.
Allow a land disturbance permit.
That's what you said, Wayne, yes.
We're going to make sure we're not getting...
Allowing a land disturbance permit, but not a building permit.
Okay, that's right.
I have a motion, and that, that covers the equitable apportionment of upsizing adequately for UDFR. Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, to consider the request of Dewberry Engineers for final platte approval of Phase 4 of Golden Oak at Firethorn, a 31-lot subdivision.
Yes, Nancy.
I don't believe you asked, it's been in the previous...
Development, so you can see where the phases relate to one another. And this is a 31-lot subdivision located on 14.48 acres. The smallest lot is 15,000 square feet, the largest is 19,795 feet. We have done a final inspection. There were a couple issues with the sidewalk connections, I believe, and there, we're waiting on them to call for an inspection on those punch list items. So that's a condition of approval. And we're, Richard Peterson still needs to approve the sanitary sewer video, and other than that, those are the only conditions of approval.
Thank you very much. I'll bring popcorn, Richard, if you invite me to. Why is that late?
Surround sound?
This is a public hearing. Does anybody request to speak to this item? If not, I'll turn the meeting over to the commissioners. The engineer is here. If you have any questions for the engineer or the staff commissioners.
I've got a question, Nancy. This application meets all of our rules and regulations. I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, case SD 18.22, approval, subject to staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Charles Thompson, any further discussion?
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It's nice to see some more exercise, lots we've developed, and see any of the other projects we should develop. You know, there's a lot pushed back on this, which made the approval issue land sold. While we probably all credit it to all of more and more and more, it's definitely more...
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, UR 1803 and 1157 review for AT&amp;T.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item for AT&amp;T, this will occur in Old Battles Village. This is, they will, the utility, the utility will consist of a number of crossings, and it will occur, if you look in your package, in the introductory paragraphs, I go into detail about where it's occurring, but essentially, it's in Garrison Boulevard and I believe it's, yeah, Craftsman Avenue, and there are no homes in that area. There are no homes in that area, and they will simply be doing a directional bore with a series of crossings of PVC conduit. And so the, the recommendation by staff is approval. And Chairman Commissioners, you'll notice, we have standard conditions of approval that we always have on utility reviews, but I want to point out that number five has been cured. So we will only need items one through four in the recommendation for approval. Invariably, in the time it required to write the staff report and get it, the packet's prepared for the planning commission. A lot of times, a utility provider will have the time to revise the drawings, so the clearance is referenced in there. All of that has been cured. Only items one through four are required for this, for conditions of approval for this item.
Thank you, Buford. This is not a public hearing. Would anybody in the public like to speak to this item? If not, I don't see anybody here from AT&amp;T Engineering either. So engineers, what's your pleasure on this? It is mucksel green, I see.
Where applicable.
Where applicable.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case UR 18.03, AT&amp;T. I move for approval, subject to staff recommendations, one through four.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Got that, Emily?
I have it.
Okay, good. Any further discussion?
Yep, me one more time. Sorry, I'm brand new on the commission this, this term, so I, and I got distracted because I have a computer, I'm having a computer issue.
You're the one that's got to get out early.
So the, the PVC, is that typical? And how, how far underground will it be? Are we going to run into an issue wishing we had put it in something more hardened in five years, 10 years?
That is a typical PVC conduit, is typical for those installations. And so, and as I was mentioning, Council President earlier, one of the conditions of approval, I noticed some clearances were not at least 36 inches, whether they were going under some drainage structures or some other utilities. So I actually found it very late in the process while I was actually writing the staff report, marked those revisions, AT&amp;T's engineering... while I was actually writing the staff report. Mark those revisions. AT&amp;T's engineers revise their drawings to place it deeper. So it's a minimum of 36 inches deep. And then wherever there are any crossings, they go 36 inches underneath any other drainage structures or any other utilities.
My apologies. Thank you.
Any further? Just talking about too, you know, previously when we have an existing neighborhood, we require them to put door hangers and make contact with the POA and those kind of things. As Beiford mentioned, there's nobody living here, so we have not done it in this case because there's no existing homes. So there won't be any impact to residences.
This is one of those things, usually people are thrilled when they're about to get a little bit faster internet. When they come in, I know, one of the few controversial, non-controversial issues we deal with. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll accept a motion.
We already have a motion.
Oh, that's right. You have the motion in a second. Excuse me, I'm moving forward. Nothing further. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Waiting for me, you're backing up, right? Next item on the agenda is Southern Light, 115211.
And Chairman Commissioners, a second utility review for your consideration. This one will occur along Highway 181, just south of the Walmart store site. It will be a directional bore. The entire project will be a directional bore. This one will travel south from just south of the Walmart site down to the entrance to Quail Creek. Then it will turn to the east and run along the south side of Quail Creek Drive. It will terminate just short of the easternmost driveway to the clubhouse at Quail Creek Drive. Very similar, very similar to as we recommended earlier. This one has the four standard conditions of approval and staff recommends approval. Mutsel Green as, Mutsel Green equipment as applicable.
Good. All right. Again, it's not a public hearing, but does anybody wish to speak from the public? And I don't see anybody from Southern Light, I don't think. Anyway, so Commissioners, any questions or concerns? If not, I'll accept a motion. I'll make a motion. I've got a motion to approve.
I have the request.
Subject to the staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second, Rebecca, again. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, under older new business, SD 1727, Point Clear Village.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for ADA plat extension. Staff recommends the extension and so we'd like to get approval for that, please.
Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Mr. Chairman, next item is, just want to make you aware of a seminar for ADA construction standards and the public right of way. It will be held on June 26 from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock at the Nick Center. Want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Please come if you can. ADA compliance has been a big issue recently for us and around the, around the country. And just, I think it'd be a good seminar for the members of the Planning Commission to, to attend and gain some extra additional knowledge on that.
All right, after this meeting adjourns, we will have a work session discussing LID sidewalks and bonding. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And now we're in our work session.